Done, so I don't forget.
Good evening, everybody. It's Monday, September 25th. It is 6:00 PM our new start time. Welcome. Will everybody please rise for our pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have four out of the five of us here. Troy will be missing the next few council meetings due to I don't know exactly what he got involved in with the Sheriff's Department. He's doing.
Orientation.
Yeah.
Law enforcement.
Yeah. So, he's gonna learn more about the Sheriff's Department for us and then he'll report back to us on that. So, moving right along, I'd like to adopt tonight's meeting agenda. We do have one thing that I know that we need to remove from tonight's meeting. Under Old Business, Mike Brady and our industrial park development, he's working with Elizabeth right now. And they are learning a lot as they work together and he needs to make some changes on his original proposal that he had. So, he wanted a little more time to come back hopefully in October and he can give us his proposal. So, I'd like to remove that number two. Is there anything else?
No, I'll make the motion and we adopt the amended budget as described.
Do I have a second?
The amended.
Agenda.
Agenda. I'm already jumping ahead, sorry.
I know. Alright, we have Lee with a second. Any other discussion? Alright. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alright, thank you. We do need to move on and adopt our consent agenda and the minutes that are in there. Is there any questions or discussion on our consent agenda for tonight? Okay. I need a motion and a second to approve our consent agenda.
I'll make the motion.
Alright, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Tim. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Alright. I just, before we get going here, I did not have anybody that wanted to speak at a public forum. I'm sure we'll have more people joining us as we move on to our meetings at six. But I did want to just say, we lost a wonderful person in our community here a couple of weeks ago, Roger Coolard. Is that how you say it?
Coolier.
Coolier. He was a wonderful man, real great. I remember him when I was in football. I remember. So, we're gonna miss him and the school district sure misses him, so I just wanted to give our thoughts and prayers to him and his family, so. A couple of other updates. I try to stay off social media, but people do text me when they see chatter on social media. Give an update on the minutes, because some people are concerned that our minutes aren't on their website. We are working diligently on that. We need May till now updated. I know there was work going on over the weekend by Michelle and Mary's helping as well. We're just trying to get caught up, so. Don't have an excuse, we're just fine, so. Also, an update on YouTube channel. We have been filming. We actually have our own camera. We've been filming every meeting, but we're having difficulties in figuring out how to get it uploaded onto our YouTube channel and not having it in multiple parts. So, we are working with St. Corey Falls. They're gonna help us. Their mayor's gonna hopefully be able to help us get everything up and running. He's working with Michelle and Michelle will be letting us know when we're ready to go as well as our new speakers and camera are here. And Lee and I are just trying to figure out a schedule where we can come up or find somebody else to install if we can't make our schedules work, so. I don't have anything else to add. Is there anybody up here that would like to add anything? Okay.
Okay.
Alright. We'll go into Old Business then, our preliminary budget approval. That is Resolution 23-09-04 in your packet. I will need a motion and a second, and then we can discuss if we have anything to discuss at this time.
I'll make the motion.
Alright, we're in motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Lee beat you to it. Lee seconded it. Is there any discussion, any questions that anybody has on our preliminary? It is, it looks large and we know that.
So, there is an addition sheet which is the resolution adopting the proposed budget. So, with the motion, we can actually say, "Resolution" and it's 23-09-04. And then on the backside of that is the proposed funding certification form.
I just want to say, I know sticker shock, obviously. We were diligently working together as a team to get things where we need them to be. None of us want to pay higher taxes, so it is preliminary. Mary's been working really hard with Abdo on going through our fund balances and we are finding some additional funds that weren't accounted for. And so, that's gonna help us be able to lower it, so. We're gonna approve hopefully tonight our preliminary one and then we'll be working the next several months before we adopt the final budget, so. Hopefully, we get this on YouTube so the rest of the town can hear it, but it's not set in stone. This is just preliminary. Tim, is there anything you'd like to add?
Yeah. I appreciate your comments on the preliminary nature of the budget, but there is still some sticker shock. And I'm just wondering if we could go through and discuss, is there anything right now that we could get this down to something less than 31.5%? I worry about putting that out there. Yes, we're, you know, we have audio recordings, we have video recordings, we have open meetings. The percentage is, in my mind, unacceptable and I think all of us agree with that, or we're gonna work hard to get it down, but. Boy, that's a tough one for me as well, just one year. And I know inflation, we haven't caught up really with inflation yet either. I did some look backs and I just did a period from basically '21 to August of this year and it's crazy. And our budgets didn't reflect that and it was, you know, some difficult budget increases, because nobody knew what inflation was gonna do either, but. I know it's still gonna be, whatever we decide on as a final budget is still going to be a significant increase. But, looking at some of our fund balances, it seems to me we could reduce a couple areas at least going into the preliminary and assume that we'll be using some fund balance to take care of some of those. I don't know. Those are just my thoughts. I threw some ideas out, just, you know, on paper to see what we could do and. You know, I don't know if we have a goal on what we want to get to from a percent increase or not. I didn't, the initial one was like 9, 28% or something like that. I think we're gonna be north of that. But, just for kicks and giggles, I put in, you know, what if we went to 18% instead of 31%? And that's about $58,000 less than what this proposed one is, so. I don't know if you want to hear some of the things I just had ideas on. The council contingency, that's one that's. It's hard to build in a contingency when we don't know what we're gonna spend it on and historically, I don't know as.
On that one, I don't have my laptop in front of me, so. There are notes of a contingency and that was paying for flowers, some of the. I think. Want to Get Days, Lightning Festival, different things like that that would be.
Thank you for reminding me. And in my mind, those should be under those budgets. And maybe we just need to stick to that. If, in light of the increase, that would be one of the things that I'd say. You know, we can work around. It looks like we're gonna have a healthy fund balance. Future or agenda items down the line here a little bit, but. That was one I just tossed out there. It's $2,500. Admin salary, looked at reducing that by 7,500 and that's the whole, not just wages, but that's the whole benefits and taxes too. The special projects fund, I looked at reducing that by 5,000. I can't remember if that was the entirety of it or not, but. You know, if we're looking at, you know, really being frugal, that would be one. The capital fund, keeping more on pace with what we've done, knowing that one year isn't gonna kill us. We're, I don't know if we'll ever be able to afford to buy a fire truck in my lifetime. But that was one, if we just ratcheted it back. Street improvements, looking at cutting that back by 10. I think we increased it by that amount, if I remember right.
I think that was last year as well.
Okay. Kevin thought, just off the cuff, that we could get by with a little less. The next couple, there seem to be healthy fund balances for. Want to Get Days, cut it back by 3,200, use some fund balances and really get aggressive in fundraising. The community center, I just cut that back by 3,200, kind of putting it back where it was. Community center, cutting 1,000 there and using fund balance to help with that. I think the ceiling project basically was the driver for that increase. And park improvements, cutting that back by 1,000, again, using fund balance and looking at what the charitable gambling fund will allow us to use those on. And then the special projects fund, they have that listed twice, sorry. So, those are just some ideas. You know, they don't come up to a whole bunch of money, but. I guess it's an indication of where my money would go between our approval here today and finalizing the budget, so. I don't know if we want to make a decision on that tonight, but I think it's worthwhile having a little bit of discussion on it.
Mary, do you have any thing you'd like to add?
Well, just to emphasize that, you know, it is preliminary and that there is, everything is really open to discussion. There are some things that we really have to consider and we will have to buy a new fire truck. You know, that's a mandate by FEMA, so that has to be provided for. But the other ones, sure, you know. The community center fund, that could be reduced. You know, that's a matter of replacing ceiling tiles. That's the immediate concern. And the. We have, on this. Park, sorry, yes, park improvements?
Yeah.
Are you talking about that 16-3?
I, that sounds correct.
Insurance is the bulk of that.
Yeah.
It's like $10,000 to think of the park.
Yes, and I was still going, going through that. I know the insurance has nothing to do with employees. It's all just going directly to buildings and property. I did find that much out, so some of that stuff will be cleaned up that way.
Yeah.
But breaking it down, it's a whole list.
And so, you know, you write about a couple of things, but we do have until December before we have the final budget, so. You know, these are all things we can talk about. You know, that is a pretty healthy increase. The preliminary is at 30, a little over 30%, so. That does have to be knocked down some to, you know, prevent, you know, the sticker shock, so. And I realize this probably isn't a great forum to talk about individual funds and accounts. I kind of just wanted to get it on everyone's mind that I think there are some opportunities for us to reduce and let the public know that we're gonna be working on that. And I think we're gonna re-engage our finance committee as well to help us with that work and obviously the public will will comment on it as well, which they should. But, those are just some ideas. I. Voting on any of that tonight is not a big deal to me, as long as we can just have that type of conversation here and kind of put a placeholder in for that.
And I definitely think, I mean, it's gonna be more than one meeting, right, for us to narrow this down and go through everything.
Yeah.
So, I, I mean, Mary and I were talking, we were talking about maybe putting the capital fund back because we did find the other fund balances that we're gonna talk about later tonight. As we're moving that money around, so I mean, there is that. I am concerned that when the time comes, you know, we have about, what, two years and we need to figure out what we're gonna do for the fire department, so. I know you can't catch up in one year, so, you know. I'm always open, because I don't want to pay a huge tax increase either, you know, it's like. We all live in the same town, so we're just trying to figure out how to do this the right way.
And it's never easy.
No, no. I did pay attention to some of the other communities, one south of here, and they had a meeting already and they were at like 22.5% for their public to come in and speak, so. Don't feel like we're, I guess from seeing that, I wasn't totally shocked, I mean, I'm shocked where we're at, but. You know, it's, we're not the only ones that are gonna be, you know, going through a lot of paper, so, trying to figure this out.
Yeah, I can leave it at that unless anyone has any other questions for me.
Lee?
Yeah, I don't really have anything to add other than, you know, like we're talking about, it's just preliminary and we gotta work on getting it down for the December deadline.
And we will have the truth in taxation meeting as well that we'll set in October. So, hopefully by December, we can talk, we'll look good, nobody will be mad when we go from there. So, I don't have anything to add. I mean, I guess, you know, I, we can start high, but we can't ever add after we send this in, so. I, in my mind, I would say let's leave it and then, I mean, I definitely appreciate all the work you've done and and looking at the funds and, you know, already starting to say, hey, can we back this up, bag that up? And with those balances that we're gonna move to, we can start quick logging that money in to the fund balances and that should help us lower.
Right.
As well, so. Alright.
So, I guess my final comment is just between now and our next budget meeting, people just kind of give it some thought and just write down some ideas. And Mary still has some work to do, I assume, as well, and rounding and splitting types of things, so. It's gonna come into more form too as we move on.
Anything else? Mary?
No, just, maybe we can call for a motion to approve the preliminary budget?
Yep, we got the motion seconded, so if everybody's done, we can go ahead for adopting Resolution 23-09-04. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Alright. Onto number three, Old Business, would be the public works crack and seal repair from some of the roads last year. Tim or Lee, do you wanna?
Yeah, I talked with Kevin. I just have a little graphic here that shows where they are. Basically, up Government Park, I'm sorry, yeah, Government Street from kind of down by the old Jail Bed and Breakfast up to the Memphis Church. And then the other one is out, Kennedy Street, Chestnut and Ernold. Just to make sure those newer roadways that we've done, we don't let them go to pot quick. So, there's some cracks, there's that, I don't know, finish that we need to put on there to protect the asphalt, so. That's what Kevin would like to do. I confirmed it with him today. Again, and that's what, what we'd like to propose.
Do you have any questions, Larry?
No, I just make a comment that it's a, it's a good fix for the roads as opposed to, you know, digging them up and repaving them. And it makes sense because, you know, you maintain the roads and it's cheaper in the long run to fix them. It's a good fix and it's a good price. And are we, is this the only proposal we got, the only bid, or?
From what I understand, we weren't able to get another one. Did you hear anything differently, Lee?
No, he called somebody and they wouldn't give me a bathroom, so.
Alright.
That happens.
Yep. But no, I think, I think it looks very reasonable. It's $6,300 for both roads, so. And it's Seal Tech Inc. is the company out of Cambridge, so. I don't, I mean, I know Kevin told me that he can't get anybody to compact for a second, but he told me that last week, so I said, well, it is what it is, so. I'm fine with that if we want to go ahead and make a motion for a second.
Yeah.
I don't even know if we need to do that because it's only 6,300.
Well, it's over the amount that.
Is it over that?
Can approve, I think.
Okay. I wasn't sure if that was 10.
Yeah, the only other thing I'd say is Kevin and I talked about maybe collaborating with other local communities next year. It's a pretty small job. Trying to schedule it and get the bits together. So, hopefully get more proposals and also maybe lower the cost. So, I'd make a motion that we approve the crack, fill and seal coating as proposed.
Okay. Do I have a second?
You have a second.
Alright. Any other discussion? Alright. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Alright, on to the cut, cut man door in the fire hall. And we got one quote from Jewel Scanning and Coring. And I thought, we had already talked about this back and we approved it, we improved this quite a while. So, it, do we need to re-approve it? Is it more than he thought? Because it.
It only costs us $2,000.
We approved this and like.
I believe we approved that they could do it, but they had to get this.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I think you're right. Okay. So, they're gonna cut one door in place, an opening, and they're gonna, it looks like Jake's gonna work with the company doing some of the work to save money via his email. So, it's $2,000, so I don't, I don't really have any discussion.
It scares me a little bit when they're talking about, we don't know if it's a load-bearing wall or not and kind of just making a guess on what they might do. I don't know if we could have our engineering firm just weigh in, take a look at it. I don't know what that would cost, but. I've seen these things go bad quickly. And unfortunately, the engineering fees could be half the amount that the actual work is. I'd also volunteer to help look at it too. I have some experience in that area. I'm not a engineering, structural engineering expert, but I might be able to look at the drawings and get a good feel for it too. But I think we should do more diligence on it, take a look at the drawings and.
Do we want to send this to Jake at Baltimore Make?
Yes, I would think I should do that. Okay, I'm sure he'd come up to the table though. Yeah.
Do we want to pass it tonight then, just pre-approval per Jake?
I would say.
At Baltimore Make's approval?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a worthy cause regardless.
Okay. Yeah, we'll make sure that we send this over and we'll have Jake look at it and if he wants to come up, he can come up. I mean, I know he's appreciated it, so. And then, if it's approved, do we want, do we just per email that he says it's a go?
Sure.
Okay. Really? You're alright with that?
Sounds good.
Okay. We'll get that over to Jake and we'll get him going on it and then per, if he doesn't find anything, we'll just give them approval then. So, I need a motion and a second to approve the Jewel scanning and coring LLC quote or bid.
You have a motion.
I'll second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Alright, on to New Business. We have two proposals in our packet that is for cleaning the city hall, the library and the community center. Shayla has been our current provider and she came in and gave us a new proposal because her prices were going up and at the time, we said, well, let's get a second proposal just so that we're following with what we promised when we started getting at these two bids when we can, so. I'm gonna flip and let Lee go first this time. Do you have anything you wanna chime in on, on either of the proposals? We got Corey Valley Cleaning, that's Shayla, and then we have.
LZM.
LBM, okay. LBM, out of Dresser.
Lewis.
Whuzell's Building Labs.
Yeah, no, both proposals look very straightforward. Either one would be good.
Larry? I see no reason to change right now. You know, Shayla has been, you know, on the spot every time we need her. She does a great job and the hundred dollar increase that she's asking for, I think it's well worth it, the investment. She knows, you know, she knows the job and she's been a good loyal worker for us, so I see no reason to change.
Okay. Tim?
It's a small dollar amount, so I'm gonna talk more philosophically than, than not. I don't have an issue with staying with her either. But when we go out and ask people for bids and they come in lower, at some point, we're not gonna get people to bid for us anymore. And if I, if I read it correctly, which I'm gonna question myself, the current one is 700 a month. One of the proposals was 650 and one was 495, correct?
Yep.
Kevin, I just elaborate a little bit, permit?
Yeah, please.
So, Shayla, she supplies all of her own cleaning supplies. She's always available when we need the cleaning center cleaned up. She automatically checks it. She does a lot above and beyond. If we go to this new firm who's not familiar with us, he won't have access to a lot of the information that Shayla already has as well. So, the slight increase for Shayla, however, the other company kind of separated it. So, you have the one for city buildings, but then also the addition, if you want, the community center, so. Deciding however, I mean, it could be less, it could be more depending on the rental that we have down there. But she does, you know, she also does cleaning of carpets if you ask her to. I think I saw on one of our budget notes that she's done that in the past as well.
Which we could use.
Yes.
So, that apple for apple, one would be 650 versus 700, so just slightly. It's not a huge, it's not gonna make or break 2024's budget.
No, I wish.
Yeah, I, I'm fine with either, or I really appreciate Michelle going out and getting the second bid. The only thing I would like to do is find out what day of the week that we're cleaning city hall. Just so we kind of have that on calendar, so everybody knows. In case somebody here knows something needs extra attention, we can let her know ahead of time. So, I guess I'm fine with just staying since it's not huge. If it was 3/4 of a difference, I would say we need to look harder at it, but it's it's $50, so I'm fine with staying with Shayla.
Do you want to make a motion?
Yep.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we stay with Shayla Johnson for the cleaning services for the city of response.
As proposed.
And I would second it.
Alright, we got a second. Any other discussion? No. Alright. All those in favor of staying with Corey Valley Cleaning, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Alright. Moving right along here, we are going to discuss building a plaque in our community center for Brian Figg. All right, moving right along here, we are going to discuss putting a plaque in our community center for Brian Pigott. And, yeah, I think he has them in the packet, but you can kind of see a picture of what the wood plaque, what gold letter it would be. So, I think it looks nice. I think it's a great idea. I have no problem with it.
Where did the request come from?
The Rogers.
So are they paying for the plaque? We're just authorizing them to put it?
Yep, they're paying for everything. They just wanted to make sure we were okay with putting the plaque up in the community center.
Well, I'd be in favor of that. You know, Brian Pigott has been in the community and a great contributor to the city over the years with his business and you know, being a friendly face on Main Street, plus very involved with the mountain jammers, providing, you know, entertainment for the community and you know, we'll miss O'Brien, and it's nice to have a, you know, a reminder of who he is and what he's brought to the community.
Yeah, I agree. Brian was one of the first persons I met when we moved here in nineteen eighty-eight. Bob worked with me at Hazelton, and he came to rescue my wife a couple times from a mouse or bat or something in the house. And actually, I think Mary pointed me in his direction at COVID. I decided I'd try to learn how to play guitar again. And Mary referred me to Brian, and I thought, oh, that's cool. And, yeah, he was a great guy. I'm gonna miss him, so I certainly support this as well.
Lee?
Yeah, I think it's a very good idea. I met Brian back in early eighties when I first came to Taylor's Falls. Always friendly on the, on the street. He was very talented in refinishing furniture and with the music. I think it's a good idea.
All right. Well, let's do a motion in a second to approve them to put a plaque up in Brian's honor.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that.
All right, Tim seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All right. Last on the agenda is the transfer of fund balances from Fund Four Twelve to the Valley View Trail Fund, Trail One Sewer Fund, and Nine Hundred Tax Abatement to the General Fund. In the packet, you can see the dollar amounts. These funds, after our last budget meeting, we instructed Mary to work with Abdo, and we wanted to make sure that we had all the fund balances, and we got a nice surprise. We have some balances and funds that we didn't know were there, and so everything happens for a reason, so maybe we are getting a little gift here of funds that were forgotten to help with next year's taxes. But right now, we just want to move it into the General Fund, and then we can start work on how we're going to use, it's two hundred and fifty thousand, four hundred and forty-two dollars.
Discussion?
Yeah.
Community motions?
Make a motion.
So I thought I had a resolution to transfer, but I do not see it here.
Uh, you have a number on it. It's a Resolution Twenty Twenty-three dash zero nine dash zero three.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
So I'll make a motion that we open discussion on that resolution number.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we can further discuss Resolution Twenty Twenty-three dash zero nine dash zero three, the transfer of these three fund balances to the General Fund. Tim, you have?
No, I think it's a good idea. They're kind of just sitting out there, not purposed for anything right now. And the only question I have, the easiest thing is just to move them into the General Fund, which I would support. But just knowing that we could, I guess this is a question in the form of a comment, we could move those elsewhere at a future date via a resolution again, correct?
Yes, you can.
Okay.
Yes. So once you figure out the budget and what's going on, you could move a portion of it to the water fund to help set off some of that. You could move it wherever you wanted. So just to give you a little history, the one for the Valley View Trail, and I kind of explained it in the packet here, but that money's just sitting out there. It's not gonna go anywhere. It's just sitting there, and so that's why we decided to use it. That that trail project will never happen. Same thing with that sewer fund that's been sitting out there for, since two thousand and ten, it's just sitting there, so that's why I recommended to just move it to the General. And then that big one, the two hundred and fifty thousand, that was part of the property tax that was being levied, but then there were also other funds that came in for tax abatement. And I don't know if at the time they knew how much those funds were gonna be, and that's why that account actually built up as much as they did. I think it all depended on the abatement revenue, so. And all of those have been satisfied. There's nothing in the way to prevent us. We don't have to pay anything back as far as grants on any of these three. Everything has been satisfied and used. I also verified that with Ellers.
Thank you. Larry, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Well, I, I fully support this resolution. I think it's a, a nice find. The, unfortunately, we could not develop the Valley View Trail to its fruition. There were some obstacles along the way. We couldn't re-engineer it to bring it safely to Cherry Hill Park and then over to the Bryant Environmental Center, which in theory is a great idea, but it's gotta be safe, and maybe sometime down the road, we can figure out a way to do that. So, but as far as the resolution is concerned, I fully support it.
Lee?
I fully support it. Like you said, nice find. I really don't have anything to add, but it's gonna help as well.
Yeah, most definitely. Thank you, Mary, for calling me. We're kind of excited. And there's three funds, so I misspoke. One is twenty-one thousand, one hundred and seventy-four dollars. That's the Valley View Trail Fund. The second fund, the sewer fund, is four hundred and fifty dollars, and then the third one is the tax abatement. That's the big one, the two hundred and fifty thousand, four hundred and forty-two, so. Thank you.
I did this, who motioned and seconded?
Uh, Tim motioned, Larry seconded.
Thank you.
Yep.
Nice catch, Mary.
Yep. Any other discussion?
Okay.
All those in favor of passing Resolution Twenty Twenty-three dash zero nine dash zero three, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'm gonna sit around.
Oh, okay.
I might give you credit. I'm happy to quit, so. All right, so our next meeting in October, I will miss, I will not be here for that meeting. Mary's motioning to me that I might have forgot something.
We did, we forgot to set the date for the TNT meeting, just in taxation, and I need to have that.
Okay.
Sorry, it was back at the beginning. I would.
It's not on my agenda, so I might read.
It, it was on that one page, but we just bypassed it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So our December meeting is on the eleventh, and I was recommending going December sixth. I think you and I talked about it, Brandon. That would give us time for discussion, and then you could approve it, that final at the eleven, December eleventh. So we need a motion for that.
Okay, so we need a motion to set our truth in taxation meeting for December sixth at six P M? And then we'll make a second.
I'll second that.
Okay, my motion, Tim seconded. Any discussion on December sixth? Does that work? Okay, all right. So all those in favor of TNT on December sixth at six P M, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right, well, that wraps things up. We got done forty minutes. It's a record for us. I just need a motion in a second to close our meeting.
I'll say I will make, I will make the motion.
To adjourn?
To adjourn, sorry, not close, adjourn.
I'll second.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everybody.